I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for our March Budget Finance Committee meeting, and I'll agree as necessary to call the roll, please.
Danny Alvis?
Here.
Nancy Barker?
Here.
John Gibson? Joshua Gillum?
Here.
Tom Kern?
Here.
Robbie Palmer?
Here.
And Jason Roach?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have six members present constituting our forum.
We'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Senator, second. Second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor of approving the agenda, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Alvis. Seconded by Mr. Gillum. All in favor of approving the minutes from February 18th meeting, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll now move on to public comment. Does anyone have something to bring before us? Okay. So, we'll move into resolutions. Looks like first one is 2025-03-02. Resolution reference to cap all charitable contributions at the 2023-2024 fiscal year allocations with the exception of an extra $2,000 to be allocated to agencies that proceed EMR certification. Let the record reflect that, Senator.
Wrong resolution number two.
2025-03-02. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gibson. If it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and fix something. When I wrote this resolution, I put 2023 and 2024, and I just, I don't know what I was thinking. That's what came out, but it really should have been 2024, 2025, instead of 23, 24. That was a mistake on my part. So, if it's okay, I would request that the committee make an amendment to change 2023, 2024 to 2024, 2025, if somebody's willing to make that amendment. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Move to amend 2023, 2024, and change it to 2024, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gibson. Any discussion on the amendment?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is it for this coming year budget?
It would affect the coming budget in the future, '25, '26, but it would freeze charitable contributions.
Okay, that's correct.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. All in favor of the amendment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we're back on our original motion as amended. And I'll go ahead and kind of talk about what I'm thinking. I know budget season's coming up, and I also know that we're going to be up against another tough budget season. I am asking to cap all charitable contributions now, because I know that fire departments, rescue squad, and EMS, and all of those folks are going to start putting together their presentations to bring to us. We've got budget hearings coming up in April. We're not going to make any decisions in April. It's going to be when we actually have those budget committee meetings where we can make those decisions. But I wanted to go ahead and put this out for discussion and passage if the committee and the commission wants to adopt it. But essentially, you know, I've been trying to think about how in the world we can stop the bleeding in the budget. And one of the things that I feel like we can do is cap those charitable contributions. We're not saying we're going to give them less, but at least cap them to where they were last year, because it's going to be tough. This budget cycle's going to be tough. And I added the EMR addition to that, and it can be amended and taken out. I wanted to add that because we did agree to give Stanley Valley that extra $10,000 for how to EMR certification last year. During the meeting, just in the discussion, it wasn't anything we voted on, but in the discussion, one of the other agencies said, "So if we get EMR next year, can we come and ask for that $10,000 too?" I mean, I wouldn't see why they couldn't. Once again, though, the point is, we're coming up on a tough budget cycle. I just didn't want to go back on something that I said when they asked if they could ask for that EMR money. So, my position is, is that either we allow those agencies to become EMR certified and receive that extra $10,000 for that service that they provide, or to withdraw that $10,000 for EMR services altogether. To me, if they qualify for it and they can get it, then they qualify for it. If we don't want to give that $10,000, I don't know how many agencies have gotten EMR certified. I know Clint Valley did. I guess Hawkins County Rescue Squad has, but it's just in my opinion. If we're going to give that $10,000 for EMR certification, anybody that qualifies for it should get it. And if we're not going to give it to those that qualify for it, then we probably should pull it from whoever we gave it to last year. And I think we did tell them that we would revisit it this year. So, that's my thinking. I know it might be a little premature, but I'm just trying to get us set up before budget hearings, before the budget cycle, so that we can stop some of the bleeding before we have to hear that. So, that's what I was thinking.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a total in mind what this is going to come down to? Or what it will cap at in the budget?
So, I don't have my workbook with me. It would be literally whatever we left it at at the end of the year. Whatever we allocated last year at the end of the budget hearings, that's where it would stay. So, I don't have my budget workbook. I should have brought it with me, but I didn't. I depend on it too much. It's not here.
So, with the wording in this resolution, would that also by default cap new requests?
Yes, it would cap.
I wanted to make sure, because by reading it, I didn't see that it was very clear. So, that like it would cap for the individual agencies, but it didn't address if there was a new organization that requests funds.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, like a new organization.
New organization comes to request funds, would that cap that by default?
So, and I wrote it kind of obscure, because I wanted to look at it one of two ways. Because here's, I'm open to amendments. This is, this, a resolution, in my opinion, you file a resolution, so you get on the floor, and then you work on it as a group, right? So, what I'm thinking is, you can either cap everything where it was and not add any new, or you can look at a certain set of money that you want to allocate and then cut that pie up in sections. But what happens if you do that, is that if you allocate, what, 1.8 million? I'm pulling that out of thin air. Then, in order to give to a new organization, you would have to pull from somebody else. So, I would be in favor of capping all of the contributions where they are and not adding any new agencies for this year.
Basically saying that no new agencies would be considered for this.
That's what I would think, but you can handle it either of both ways.
I think it's 1.6 million. I knew it was close to 1.8.
So, yeah. So, right now, you're looking at 1.630342 for the '24, '25. So, that would be capped, 1.6032. Thank you, Robbie.
I had actually called and talked to Eric here a while back about, but the communication had already gone out, and it was something we had to decide to get through anyway, but I was just bouncing off of him, basically saying, "I think it would be good to review a lot of these contributions," right? So, saying, instead of what lots of times, or what goes out every year, which is if you're not asked for anything, you don't have to show up, if it reversed as, "If you want anything, we're basically in a renewal year," right? So, you need to come before us in order to continue to receive funding, because, you know, some of them, well, you haven't heard them in a while, and that's just the truth. And no follow-up around would probably not come. So, you know, I'm not necessarily against this. I think we've got, you've got to do something, and I always say, "Everybody's a conservative till you go to cut their slice of the pie," right? And then nobody's a conservative. And so, I'm not necessarily against this. My first thought, initial thought when I opened my packet was, this is more of a budget hearing or budget meeting type deal, but with your explanation, I get what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. That is the point. It's the earlier we can get this communicated out to those nonprofits, I feel like the better suited they are to be able to come for their presentation, and they know ahead of time before we're having it, you know? So, I feel like the earlier the better. And I actually had been thinking about running this resolution for a while, and to be honest, I'm a little bit later than I wanted to be. I preferred to have run it a couple of months ago. I just didn't, I didn't submit it, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just have a, just an issue that I need to discuss and see what we can do. There are some of these nonprofit organizations, and I'm thinking, as an example, EMS, that if we don't continue to help fund them, and they cease to operate, it's going to cost the county way more money than our contribution would have.
So, my proposal's not to cease to fund them, it's just to cap their contribution.
Right, but their costs are going up like everybody else's, so.
And you know, what I don't want to get us back into is, I'm going to be honest with you, last year's tax increase beat me up. I despise every second of it. I do not want to bring another tax increase for the public. If we can help it, I don't want to do it. I want to do everything I can on the front end to stop that from happening. And I want EMS and rescue squad and fire departments to operate. I want them to be able to have what they need. And you're right, costs are going up, and we had hoped that, the way things would change, that costs would at least stop going up as fast, but it doesn't look like they are. But at the end of the day, you know, we're answerable to the people that.
But I guess the point I'm making is, the people also have to understand that that's a necessary service. And if they cease to operate, then we're on the hook for a whole lot more money.
So, Jason, do you foresee asking for an increase this year?
Yes.
How much of an increase you, I know I put you on the spot. Do you have an idea of a guess of what you might have to ask for?
Well, what we've submitted is roughly about, from last year's contribution, is a credit $300,000 increase.
And if that $300,000 increase were not passed, I mean, are you going to stop services?
There'll probably be services that we have to cut.
Well, is that true, Jason?
No. I'm sorry. There'll probably be services that we have to cut, if you're okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Because, I mean, it's probably going to affect you more than it may.
Well, awesome. But kind of to echo what the mayor said, and I don't mean any of this with any disrespect, because I know you've got a job to do with the budget, and you have so much money, just like what we do. But public safety is vital, and that's the majority of your contribution list is public safety, fire, rescue, EMS. I think 911's in contribution to, I'm not really sure. But anyways, we're looking at the public safety sector to cap and to make them do the same services we've been doing for this past year at the same cost. Again, like I said, I know it's difficult, and nobody likes taxes. I know that. I'm with you on that as well, but it's just, I understand where you're coming at with the resolution. I do. It's just, it's a double-edged sword. It really is. So, the only ones that I can really speak for, I'm sorry. The only ones that I can really speak for, as far as operational, is EMS. And, yeah, I mean, we're skating by, because everything's increasing. New regulations, new rules that we have to comply with, all costs money. And obviously, the ones that put the rules and regulations in don't say, "Okay, well, here's your money to make sure that you can do it." They put it back on local government. So, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, you bring up a fair point, that this, the resolution is fairly general, which it would be up to how we, if we drilled down, right? And you said, "We've got this much money we're going to allocate, and then we could allocate within that fund." That's the way you could do it, and then maybe still have the money. But that's a fair point. If, you know, this could potentially hamstring us to not be able to increase things that we wanted to, even if it was necessary, without having to, you know, go back and undo it. That's a fair point.
I mean, that's right. And therein is the struggle with trying to operate a government as conservatively as you can, is you have to find ways to stop them. I use this phrase a lot, and I'm sorry. You have to find ways to stop the bleeding, because if you don't, you're going to be triaging from this point on. And that's the situation that we're in, is we're trying to find where our money goes to benefit the taxpayers most effectively, but at the same time, not putting an extra burden on top of the taxpayers, any more than we had to do last year. And, you know, I even proposed a couple of years ago, and I do think the commission needs to look at doing a two or a three cent property tax increase annually, so that we don't have to have those 15 cent and 24 cent tax increases every year. I think that's wise, but we're just not in the position to do that, because last year was a huge tax increase. And, you know, I'm just trying to think of creative ways that we can get ahead of some of the spending, because at the end of the day, we're answerable to the people in our districts. And the thing is, is I want the people in my district, if, you know, my kids get hurt, or lord knows you hauled my mama probably once a month from a nursing home, you know, I appreciate the service that you guys provide. We're just in a situation where we've got to cut where we can cut, because state mandated increases, insurance costs, and you look at the cost of doing business for government agencies is going up as well. You know, it's just like we get hit year after year. And I think you do appreciate where I'm coming from, and I do appreciate your point of view too, because I want you to be able to provide the services. And until now, I didn't realize how much of an increase you were going to have to have.
Mr. Chairman, so just back on the discussion, we, I did some quick figuring here, and it may be off a little bit. Between the contribution to fire department, rescue squads, E-911, EMS, and our maintenance of effort through the library, that total would be $1.4 million. 1.6, so the difference is $166,900. Just, that's just some information out there. You know, looking at the services that we need in this county and the library that we have to fund, that's where the biggest chunk of your 1.6 million dollars is at. Now, that's just in reference. That's not trying to say one thing or another. That's just information. Your emergency services, that's where 1.4 million dollars.
Is that combined with, I'm sorry, does that include E-911?
Yeah, the E-911 and emergency response.
So, E-911, fire, rescue, EMS, and maintenance of effort, the library?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I let.
So, it's $166,900. Would you, since this is your resolution, I know I made that amendment for point 45, would you be in favor of excluding those services?
I mean, I'm open to discuss any amendment. That's why I made it as generic as I did, because I wanted the committee to work it out. So, this is a starting point. If you want to present amendment, I'm okay with it.
I would like to make an amendment to the resolution to exclude the fire department, rescue squad, E-911, EMS, emergency response, and then the maintenance of effort to the library.
Paul just said, "As necessary."
Mr. Chairman, how many amendments really are we going to do on this? Do we need to?
Uh, two amendments. So, this, I thought it was three. Not three?
Could be. You know Robert Churchill's bearing idea. I thought it was two, but that, that's not.
I think it's three.
Awesome. I think three, two.
Okay.
To exclude EMS, library.
Fire departments. Say EMS, library, fire departments, rescue squad, E-911, and the emergency response team.
Is that a has-nam?
Has-nam concluded in, I believe that's the response to.
It should be the emergency.
Also, has-nam listed as a contribution in there.
It should be there somewhere.
You finished your amendment?
Yes, I'm finished.
I'll second that.
All right. The amendment has been made to exclude emergency services. Is that generally what we're doing? Seconded by Mr. Gibson. Discussion on the amendment?
I just, I made that amendment just, those are services we can't, we can absolutely not do. Our citizens can't do it without. And we see it every year, any natural disaster, fire call, EMS call. In this state, it's just the rescue squad. Make sure that includes Churchill and Hawkins Counties, and those two are grouped together. I just, I don't think we can budget. You know, I know Director Merle was hitting what he's going to be asking. I've doubled for the cap on him yet until we get further into the budget hearing. I do appreciate what you do, and I understand what you're trying to do, which is something that I don't think we can budget on the amount of the rule that our county has.
And how to explain, you know, as a slalom resolution, my feelings are hurt by many like that. I wanted us to have a starting place. So, I, I mean, I think it's a good amendment to start with.
In regards to the amendment, I do feel like that there'll be some more conversations that we'll have to have with each of those organizations, and that that'll probably be the majority of what we're spending the budget time on, to be, at least a big section of it. So, I do think that we at least need to have those conversations. Whether we end up at the same number that we were at from, by capping it as an overall, if we end up at the same place, I think we should at least have the conversations to hear from the respective organizations.
So, the non-emergency services?
No, no, the emergency services.
Because we've been the majority of our contribution of them.
Right, so.
All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? Ms. Sarah, will you call the roll, please?
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Jason Roach?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
And Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Mr. Gibson, do you have another amendment?
I would like just to add a little bit more clarity on that. As an additional line item at the end, just to therefore be further resolved, that no new organizations would be considered for the FY '25, '26 budget.
Give Ms. Sarah a chance.
Just become that, like you don't ask.
No, no new.
We're not considering new organizations that we haven't done in the past. Just for the clarity on that.
I appreciate it. Is there a second on that amendment? Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion on the amendment? Ms. Sarah, just let me know when you're ready.
Great.
Yeah, I'm great.
We'll now call the roll.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
No.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Jason Roach?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
Six yes, one no, motion carries.
I do have a little bit of a concern, just as we talk about these amendments. And we're getting deep in budget territory with no information about the budget. We're voting on spending that we don't even know what it is yet. Because even that, I don't know. It just makes me a little nervous that we're going to hamstring ourselves into not being able to do something that we need to do, without the information in front of us. I mean, if Jason hadn't been, if Jason Merle hadn't been here, we could have just passed it as is, and we might not have been, without having to undo this, we could have passed it without even knowing. And what other organizations are out there, which we've excluded in non-emergency services, so that helps a lot. It's, I guess what I'm saying is, it's one thing to make decisions like this with a budget binder in front of us when we have the full picture, but we're really making a decision without the full picture. That's my only concern, which was my original concern, but I really love the spirit of it. But I'm just concerned that we, that we could end up in a mess or something I'm thinking about.
So, my response to that would be, we know costs are going up. We know that we're over a barrel when it comes to revenues aligning with expenditures. Whether we've got a budget book in front of us or not, we know that costs are going up for us to operate government, and we've got to be able to find a way to conservatively cut costs where we can to allocate for the costs that are going up that we can't control. There's nothing, I don't know what the state mandated increases for constables and office holders are. I don't know what the step increases for salary is going to be for government employees, county government employees, but it's going to hit us hard. And I feel like we owe it to the taxpayer to show a good faith effort to hold spending as limited as we possibly can, first off. And secondly, I ran it because I wanted to get ahead, so that nonprofits would know going into budget season. So, I understand the concern about not having information in front of you, but it's not going to get better. It's going to be worse, and that's what I'm trying to get ahead of now. But I appreciate your thoughts, because you are correct. We are making a decision based on information we don't have, other than the fact that it's going to go up. That's, I know that.
Well, we haven't done anything here that we couldn't undo if we had to.
That's true. Simple majority would undo it.
I look at myself as more of a warning, without having figures in front of us. For that people know that where we stand, more of a warning than it is cutting stuff.
Well, you know, looking at this, just looking at the contributions we did give last year.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Palmer.
Chairman Roach, can one of us get in touch with Churchill Rescue Squad and have it in the ear of our next meeting to clarify where they're at on that thing that they had up there?
Yes, sir.
I think I still have that article, that $56,000 was sold about three years ago.
Yes, sir.
Call for a question on that.
Yes, sir. Question's been called for. Is there any objection to the question?
I just need clarification. Is someone going to make a clean copy of this resolution, or are we going to just chop it up that night?
Probably would be better to make a clean copy. As long as I'm the sponsor of the resolution, I'll do that, as long as I can get some good notes. Ms. Sarah, let me take a picture of her notes or something.
You know, if you'll email that to me, then I'll make everyone a copy of that that night.
Thank you. All right. Question's been called for. I'm sorry.
I'll re-listen to this and send it to you. Does that sound okay, Stephanie? It sounds this way, but I'll go ahead and take care of those amendments.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Sarah, will you call the roll, please, on the resolution as amended?
Jason Roach?
Yes.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
And Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right. 2025-03-04. Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer. This is another one. Apparently, I'm not the best at writing resolutions. I put April on it instead of March. But I will say that I received some information from Jamie Miller just a little while ago that there is a different style of hiccup with the DMR radios than there was. And it has to do with frequency attainment and being able to get those frequencies. So, the long and short of it is, if we were to buy the equipment right now, if we were to give the fire departments, the idea is to give them a check for what the cost for 10 portables, or pardon me, 10 mobiles, 20 handhelds, and one base radio, to just issue back to them, so that they could buy the radios. Problem is, if they buy the radios, they may not have frequencies to operate on, because there has been a pretty big hiccup in that frequency attainment. So, I'm going to request that this resolution be referred to public safety at their next scheduled quarterly meeting. As the sponsor of the resolution, I'm asking for that.
You need a motion?
If you don't mind, we just, a motion to refer it to the public safety committee.
Seconded.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Palmer, seconded by Mr. Gibson. A motion to refer is not debatable. Miss, or all in favor of referring it to the public safety committee, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And so, that one will be pulled from the packet. I'll pull it at the meeting. Okay. 2025-03-05, approval to surplus highway department, 2005 Ford F-450 truck. Thank you, Mr. Alvis. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion?
Victor Jones, can you fill us in on, is this just out of, completely worn out? Or we don't, just a?
Tree fell out and crushed it. It's been told that we can't do any transactions till we get surplus.
Is insurance? Is insurance, do they are?
They're waiting on this.
I can only imagine what a two thousand five truck's worth now.
Ten thousand dollars.
Would that money go back into your equipment line item?
Should be a little more referred, uh, any more radio to Public Safety Committee. We're on twenty-twenty-five oh-three oh-five.
Okay.
Any other questions about surplus in this truck?
All right, uh, Ms. Sarah, will you call roll please?
Tom Kern?
Yes.
Jason Roach?
Yes.
Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five oh-three oh-six, approval to amend the appropriation of the original wheel tax fee in the amount of six dollars sixty-seven cents from Highway Debt Service Fund to Highway Capital Projects. Thank you, Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Gillum, is there any discussion? Ms. Sarah, will you call roll please?
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
Jason Roach?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
And Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Twenty-twenty-five oh-three oh-seven, approval to allocate the twenty-twenty-three state opioid abatement funds to an opioid response program directed through Hawkins County Emergency Medical Services.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer. And I, I want to clarify, this, this resolution came out of our last budget meeting. Did we, did we vote to move this forward in the last budget meeting? Do you remember?
No, I've, I've made a note on here, uh, no action was taken during the February budget committee.
Okay.
I have two concerns, yes. One, uh, which I expressed this to you, Wayne, about where I was buying vehicles. Here we are buying two more. Now for a good cause, sure. But we, we're buying, we're buying two more vehicles and when they come up to be replaced, will we buy them again? And so it'll be two more that, that we'll have to be spending so much on every so often. That's one concern. My other concern is, uh, so, I'm gonna say this, uh, Jason Merle, but without it, I don't want you to take it personal, okay, it's something to say. But the organization is struggling financially, right? And so we're going to start another program that's gonna cost money underneath the program that's already struggling. A department that's already struggling. That is my concern. If could we not use some of this money to maybe fund the department as a whole, offset the operating costs? No. That's not an option. No, it's opioid money that has to be spent in certain ways. And this one was cleared through, the folks that could say yes or no. And they love this program. And to your first point about vehicles, this money will continue to come in for many years. So, you know, if we ever have to replace a vehicle, that money will be here. We struggle to find a, a way to spend this money in the, in the correct direction.
Can I throw a question out to you, Director? With this type of program, do you, how would that affect, affect your operations in regards to the EMS side of what you're doing right now? Would you perceive like that could actually reduce your overall costs as having the specific opioid type treatment?
Yes, it could. So this program is in hopes to help reduce opioid-related emergencies within our camp, which will obviously reduce our operating expense to reduce cost in hopes. So yes, it could reduce our, our costs for operations on the EMS side. And kind of to address some of your concerns, most, uh, as far as the county buying vehicles, the only thing that's ever been requested until now for purchasing of vehicles is ambulances. And I don't ever foresee that changing. I don't foresee us coming to you saying, hey, we need to, we need the county to buy us a SUV or pickup truck to do. That comment was not directed specifically at you. No, I, I just, I wanted to. Everybody's always named a car. Right, I get it. And, and like, like the mayor said, this is a specific program that, that has to be directly tied to what's approved and what's not approved. So, um, that's where this money is going to, is stuff that this program has given the okay that this money can be spent on. So, and my understanding is if it isn't spent by a certain time, it, yeah, it goes back to some, uh, somebody. Not, not anybody here. So, um, so yeah, I just wanted to.
Is this the money that, is this the money the state's collecting? I know there's two pots of opioid money, so this is the state money, correct?
Director Merle, I know in the past we have, anytime the county have offered you any equipment, we have a, I guess the correct number, lean for, what, five years? Or I believe that's what we've done in the past. Would these vehicles fall under that also?
That's what y'all want? I don't have a problem with it. I would recommend it myself. If it's possible through that program. If it's possible, I mean, that would be a good idea, but I'm not sure that we could take ownership of a vehicle that was meant for an opioid program.
But, well, the reason I'm asking, if EMS were to fall through and we come up on it, we don't have any EMS service. Some can have to be done with the equipment. If we're using our money to buy the equipment, then it should come back to us as a county.
This is opioid money.
This is not, yeah, this is opioid money. I, I, like I said, I don't know the right answer to that.
What year does the equipment appreciate to no value? It's really important question about whether, whether it could transfer it to a, what year would your equipment, equipment like? Is it about year seven? It's like an equipment for four, four years.
Usually that's somewhere for twenty-five percent here too, in all the vehicles on works.
So I mean, I would think more at that point, it would depreciate to the point where the value where it came from wouldn't, I, I don't know, because it was drug fund type stuff that matters where you acquired it from, so I could see it being a problem. I think, I think the, the big factor with that though is that the, the hope that we would see savings were on the EMS side by adding, by using that program to offset some of what's already occurring on that to kind of just bridge those funds in a way, but it's through the services versus actually through the, the books, if that makes sense.
But if the system, let's just say the EMS system failed through two years from now, and we took, taken this money and now again gave it to a program that no longer operates, would that, could that vehicle be surplus be used somewhere else in the county as, you know, a county department or?
Would the program operate under subsection of EMS under the county?
Good question, I don't know.
I don't think we'd be able to use any proceeds from any of that for any other program.
So it, it makes me be, be, we'll just sit in there?
Not necessarily. I mean, it could be sold and go back into the opioid money. Maybe. I don't know that for sure either. But it can't be sold and say, go give Danny the money, it's not gonna work. So how would I address the problems that are here? I don't know if she'd have things that I'm sitting here saying we're closing our doors anytime soon, it's just, it's, it's thin. So we, we have a hiccup of a blown motor or something like that that we just, we're not generating the revenue to be able to just go drop twenty or thirty thousand dollars on the engine right off the bat. That's what I mean by that skating bike, worth it, okay? So just want to clarify that.
Well, I didn't take it that way. I mean, honestly, I know that you operate with a thin margin about every year, uh, because you're a nonprofit at the end of the day.
Right.
And, well, this is, nevermind, it's not germane to this resolution, sorry, I'll ask you this question later. Any other question about the opioid abatement funds?
I do have a question, a concern, needless the Narcan, uh, panned out in the area. Maybe two stations, one upper and one lower. How, can that ever be monitored or, or what's your thoughts there?
There was a, I talked to Eric and a little five people, but we had to make a revision of that because I had a concern.
Sorry?
We made a revision of that.
Okay.
I had that concern also.
I did.
And when we found out that Eric had contacted us about this funding, we just wanted to go back. And he said, what can we do to fix this? And so we revised the program some. I took those out. And I did find out also that the Sullen County Coalition did not swap a freestanding box. They only supplied for the visits. So we included Narcan in with this program now, took those out. And we've got a, we put in a, um, fully visual audio customized trailer to take to two events a month and to all the, like Carriage Days, Wolves Gap, Supermiles events, um, to give out the Narcan. That way it's more.
I appreciate that because I hope you understood.
And we also included, um, we online are listing thirty industrial division, the online part is definitely a part of it. We put in there for two Narcan kits for each of those with training. And we also included all county governmental agencies training in Narcan kits included in that. Any, any office you all want to send. We'll take it to any governmental, any city office, your office, schools, fire departments. We're just trying to get this money allocated so we're lost it and put it for use for the county. So.
Chairman, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I've got a list of how we redone it, and I, I didn't, I feel like the revisions are much better factors and things come up with it. But, and it was a very long, um, we talked with a specialist in Knoxville that is kind of, the specialists overlap it with them. And they was very happy with it and was very excited about the program.
You have a, you mentioned this a slice, I can't remember the figure, uh, the cost of this program, because a lot of this is initial investment, right?
Yeah.
There's not been an ongoing annual cost of that program.
With the revisions and everything, we can't, we, I'll give you papers, like two-hundred-sixty-eight thousand, but we allocate all the money to Narcan. That way there's an allocation there for that. I think the allocated money can be kept for two or three years, whatever Eric told me. So that way we don't have to pay anybody. And there might be some pipelines in there, Eric contacted me and he's already kind of, I feel, working with me. And I'll talk about two, I'm applying for a grant for the child safety program too, if you have an idea for children. We'll do the child safety plan, often, and send them to the community.
Any other questions about twenty-twenty-five oh-three oh-seven? I do have one request, and this is simply housekeeping. There's two resolutions in the packet that I had questions about. One of them, I agreed to run a long time ago with Nancy, and I forgot. So I didn't write that resolution, and it got presented, and I wondered where it came from. And sure enough, I had emailed back and forth with Nancy, and I had agreed to run it. I just, as, as you know, I, I run in a different, thousand different directions sometimes. So that one, I, I agree, we were good. If a resolution's gonna be run with my name on it, please let me submit it. Send it to me first and let me be the one to submit it. So in this sense, I'm asking for you, I'll hand deliver it to you or I'll send it to you from my commissioning mail. So that, if, if it comes anywhere else, please come through.
I usually make sure that I contact the commissioners, make sure.
Well, I'm, I'll take that away from you that way, you won't have to do that for me. I'll, I'll send it to you. So any, any resolutions, even if it comes from the budget committee, if it, pardon me, if it'll come to me first, I'll submit it to you, we'll be good. Any other questions?
Jason, I'll do a little clarify. So Wayne, you said the last twenty-one thousand dollars remaining fund would be used to replace the Narcan, correct?
Yeah, that's how I feel, all the funding, uh, replacement, expiring. And like I said, we've got Narcan in the fire departments now, it's gonna expire, you know, it's.
All right, any other questions about twenty-twenty-five oh-three oh-seven? Ms. Sarah, will you call roll please?
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Jason Roach?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
And Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-five oh-three oh-eight, uh, budget amendment general fund. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, is there a second? Second by Mr. Gillum, any discussion on the budget amendment? Seeing none? Ms. Sarah, will you call roll please?
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
Jason Roach?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question real quick. Do you want even the budget resolutions to come to you first?
I mean, if, if you will email them to me, I don't care to forward them on, but at least I can look over.
These, these typically run right up to the deadline.
Right at four o'clock.
Usually right at four o'clock.
That's usually when we receive them, it's right at four o'clock.
Yeah, Eric and crew work on these things right up to the deadline.
If it's an amendment that's no new money, then I'll, I'll save, but I don't mind that one. If it's, if it's a, if it's a full resolution, I request that.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-five oh-three oh-nine.
Make a motion and send it out.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kern, any discussion? Seeing none? Ms. Sarah, will you call roll please?
Jason Roach?
Yes.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
And Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-five oh-three ten, budget amendment highway fund.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Alvis, is there a second?
Go ahead.
Seconded by Mr. Gillum, any discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Danny, are we, so I noticed here you're decreasing the asphalt hotbeds by forty thousand dollars. Where, why are we, I know one of the biggest concerns our citizens have about fixing the roads. Why are we decreasing our hotbeds?
I'm Robin Peter Pay-Paw. I've got forty thousand dollars, or thirty-one thousand coming in for a tractor. And when it got hit, the check is in the mail, according to the insurance company. In order to have, I'm planning on buying another tractor to move with, in order to have it by the end of the month, tuck that money out, and I'm gonna put the other tractor, may have to do another amendment to put that money that I get out of tractor back into where I need it.
And then the overtime pay, we're increasing the overtime pay, is that, any of that related to the FEMA?
Some of that is FEMA, some of that is high storms, some of that is snowstorms, some of that is the wind. We're just, just overbaited, or will be.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions about this budget amendment? All right, Ms. Sarah, will you call roll please?
Tom Kern?
Yes.
Nancy. Jason Roach?
Yes.
Robbie Palmer?
Yes.
Joshua Gillum?
Yes.
John Gibson?
Yes.
Danny Alvis?
Yes.
And Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Yes. Seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that's all of our resolutions for today. Any other business to come before the budget committee this time? Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate, since I just talked to the personnel committee, to bring this up to the budget committee, Nancy?
Sure.
Okay.
Is this informational purposes?
It's informational, and I'll ask a question that obviously, you know, you can say yes and no or maybe.
It should be, it'll be officially heard next month.
Right.
That's what's coming up.
Yep.
Kind of figured it'd be heard next month, but, um, and, and the rest, already got one of these, that's why I didn't lay in anymore. So I, I wanted, uh, I talked to the personnel committee about requesting a raise from the deputy. All the information here, the reason I wanted to bring this forward was because I get asked all the time, commissioners, elected officials, others, what does the veteran service office do in this county? So, um, I actually asked Randy, did Danny ever come forward and present to the commissioners, hey, this is what we've done over the last year, some kind of annual forward, et cetera? And the answer was no. And not that I like doing reports, because I've had to do them a lot in the past. But I do think it's in. because I've had to do them a lot in the past, but I do think it's imperative for my office to tell the county, to tell you as commissioners, what we do and what we bring back to this county. So that's what this was an effort to do, and like I said, I was going to ask for, I am asking for a raise for Randy, but I understand that's not going to be heard until next month. But, so the VSO approximately in this county, we have, according to the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Department of Veteran Services, and the BA, approximately three thousand seven hundred ninety eight veterans, okay? That's a low number, and the reason I say that's a low number is because that's based on healthcare enrollment through the Veterans Health Administration. But there are a lot of veterans that aren't enrolled in Veterans Healthcare Administration Services. What that breaks down to when it comes to disability compensation for our veterans in this county is approximately forty two point six million dollars coming back into this county through disability. That's non-taxed federal money that goes directly to the veterans. No tax on the veterans at this bill. So it's coming back into the county, which equates to approximately eleven thousand dollars per veteran on average. So every veteran in this county gets approximately eleven thousand dollars additional that they get to spend in that county, or where they so see fit. When we stack up Hawkins County compared to every other county in the state, ninety five counties, this is where we fall out. For just population, we're approximately twenty seventh in the state. Six point six nine percent of the population, which equates to thirty second. But forty two point six million dollars that come back into the county from the VA ranks at twenty third. The seventy seven point eight million, which is a total of the disability compensation, but also Veterans Healthcare Administration Services that's provided, that includes social workers and other things, durable medical equipment that goes out to veterans, we rank twenty second in the state. Of the approximate average that comes to every veteran, we rank sixteenth out of ninety fifth, out of ninety five in the state. The state average for compensation and pension coming back to veterans is approximately nine thousand one hundred dollars. So we're about two thousand above that. And then when it comes to our office, the amount of time we spend per veteran, we spend on average about sixty six minutes. And I talked to the personnel committee earlier, what that equates to for us is the difference between our office and most other county services offices. When a veteran comes into our office, they file a claim, we follow up on that claim. We track it the entire time, through the process, through the VA, and then we notify the veteran as soon as we see, and we typically see because we have access to the VA system, which is granted through the Tennessee Department of Veteran Services. We actually have a PIV card, ID card, that gives us access to the VA system. So we can see that claim going through the process, and we can notify the veteran approximately two weeks before they ever get a letter or anything else, to go, this is what the VA just decided. Good, bad, or different. If it's bad, we can formulate a plan to go back after it. If it's good, it's, hey, by the way, you're going to see a deposit in your account here in the next few days. All right? That's the difference between us and most other services officers, service officers. So I'll give you an example. The VA Medical Center Mountain has three state veteran service officers in that office. You walk in there, file a claim, one, you can't just walk in, you have to make an appointment. Two, you'll never hear from them again. And we know all of them, they're good people, but they're just overwhelmed. So they don't follow up. That's the personal services we provide to our veterans, is there's a follow up. Somebody answers that phone, we're in the office, somebody is answering that phone. If you leave a message, we're calling you back, okay? Example, Hamlin County has a part-time service officer. Sometimes he's in the office, sometimes he's not. If you don't live in Hamlin County, he will tell you to go away. He will tell you to go to another county wherever you came from, which is stupid. We can file a claim in any county. Any veteran service officer can file a claim for anybody outside the county or in the county. Granger County currently has on their voicemail, hey, we don't have a veteran service officer, please go to Hawkins County. Hancock County still files paper claims, and the veteran service officer does it out of the American way. He doesn't have his own dedicated spec. When you compare us to light counties with similar populations of veterans, for instance, Jefferson County, three thousand seven hundred forty one veterans, to our three thousand seven hundred ninety eight, their VSO salary is more than myself and my decade. Carter County VSO salary, same thing, more. They've been in the office approximately seven years. What I failed to mention to Jefferson County Veteran Service Office was in the office for approximately one year, started that salary and quit. It's hard to keep veteran service officers in because, and we have this conversation at the state level for our annual training all the time, two years ago at the state level, fifty one percent of the veteran service officers in the state resigned. And the question was why? Salary? Loyalty. You gotta want to do the job. If you don't want to do the job and you can't accept the salary, you're not sticking around. So I'll let you look into the second page there, I'm not going to go through all of that, but I really gave you a breakdown of it. We process approximately three veterans' claims a day. That seems low, but what I go into the second page is everything else we do when it comes to calls from families, widows, setting up headstones, correcting headstones for a certain individual that had a headstone created by a funeral home that was incorrect. Family member came to me and said, can you get this corrected? Absolutely. Thursday, I had two veterans from McMinn County drive into our office. The reason I drove into our office is because they said, you're at your station, proceed yourself. Another veteran told us we needed to come talk to you, so here we go. So, having said all that, you can read the rest, but the reason I'm asking for a raise for my deputy is because, well, she's undercompensated, she has maxed out on the pay scale. I asked for a raise last year, got it. She has nowhere to go on the current pay scale, and I believe that she's imperfectly compensated for what she does. She'll have eighteen years of service in that office, that's all. Any questions? Sorry, I know there's a lot of them.
A bunch of information. I would just say, based on the conversation we had about Captain on charitable, in our department, charitable usage, as the only veteran only she's ever aware of, I wish I could give her a thousand more a year for the job she does, because you can't find a brain. We are in a very, very, very precarious budget system. It is going to, and, you know, I'd rather look you in the eye at a public meeting and say, I don't, I don't know how much extra spending that I'm willing to support this year, just given the budget costs we've got, I'll consider it. I'm just going to vote. But, you know, we, we're going to have to do, like I was using the word earlier, we're going to do a lot, do a lot of triads when the budget here happens, so I appreciate what she does, and, you know, I appreciate you. I'm one of those veterans who stay on top of the line. But at the end of the day, we have to fund, we have to honor revenue to the question. And so I just, I just wanted to say that out loud.
Our question's asked. And trust me, I'm, I'm one of the guys in this county, who's a resident in this county, and people said I'm not from here. I chose to live here, okay? And I'm one of the ones that complains all the time about roads. But at some point, you have to raise taxes or find exactly like you said, Jason, a way to fund everyone in this county needs, and that's revenue creation. Hopefully businesses moving into the county will fund more on that. But at some point, your proposal of increasing the budget by a certain percentage every year is the only way you're going to create revenue. I would propose, I'm just another citizen, you should raise that by the cost of living allowance every year, because then you have a guaranteed revenue stream in the county, and you don't have these conversations every year.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you for taking time.
If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion for adjournments. So I'll be glad to say, I'll probably let you know my second time, all those names, Mr. K.